Twenty-two. The meeting's been properly posted. Whoever roll call, please.
Yes. Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Here.
Dr. Kahn?
Here.
Dr. Beer?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Friends of Franklin, Mrs. Larson and Mr. Decker, please.
We have your words if you want from your original. You got it.
Just keep moving.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'm going to have you guys go over by our Franklin sign over there.
Our photo op.
For photo op?
Angela, you dressed to coordinate with it.
Very good colors. Thanks again.
Thank you. All right, community comment. Participants under this agenda item must be residents of Franklin Public School District and must limit their statements to three minutes with a maximum of 15 minutes for any hall comment. If the community comment is related to an agenda item, the board may respond to that comment either at the end of community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. The board may not discuss a comment or question that does not relate to an agenda item per Board Policy Administrative Rules 8300. Mary Yank, you are the only participant tonight. At least you're the only one that signed up.
My name is Mary Yank, 5731 West Cascade Drive. My comment is apropos of nothing except me having a thought as I was listening to the MPS board meeting, which I sometimes hear because it's broadcast on my favorite radio station. And they begin every meeting giving an acknowledgement of the Native American tribes that occupied the land that is now their schools. And they mention or acknowledge the passing of any staff, former staff, and unfortunately too often, students. So I guess I was just wondering, obviously the Native American part wouldn't be appropriate, but I was just wondering if our board meetings could be prefaced by just an acknowledgement of our, how proud we are of our hardworking students, acknowledge our dedicated teaching staff, our supportive parents, our community. I just think it would kind of set us apart from, you know, just the standard, you know, roll call and things like that. And then whether it would be appropriate or not, obviously is not for me to say. But, you know, once in a while, we do have a student who passes away, or maybe a parent, or certainly a staff person or a retired staff person. And I just think it's just a nice acknowledgement of, you know, the community and again, would kind of set us apart if we would do that. And I'm not talking about something that would go on and on, you know, 30 seconds before the meeting might just be a nice, you know, a nice thing to do. So just wondering if that could be ever taken under consideration. So that's my comment. And thank you for all you do.
Thank you. All right, I know nobody else signed up. Does anybody else want to speak? All right, thank you. I'm looking for, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. School board calendar, there is a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, December 7th, 2022, at the ECC at 6:00 and one on January 11th, 2023, at the ECC at 6:00 p.m. One more meeting this year after tonight. District Administrator update. Mrs. Bennen, please.
Hi. Good evening. So two updates we're focusing on this evening. One is, it seems like a nice time to acknowledge our partnership with the Education Foundation. They have their show, their fashion show this weekend, which we know they've been working very hard to get set up. It's one of their biggest fundraisers that they do. And most of the money that they raise in their fundraisers goes back towards their grant program, which is immediately back in our teachers' and students' hands, building on the experience they have in the classroom or maybe even outside of the classroom, but a part of something to support learning that's taking place or how we better support our learners. So if you haven't had a minute to look at the online auction, it is active and going. I took a peek today. And that goes until I think about 8:00 o'clock on Saturday. So the reception and things start at 6:00 at the Sabre Center, actually in the cafeteria by the Sabre Center. And then at 7:00, they move into the fashion show and then the auction closes at the culmination of that. So hopefully you've had a minute to look at it. Another exciting piece that we've partnered with them on is through our Gear Up Professional Development Time that we do with our staff. We had Vicky Cordani run a session that talks about what the Education Foundation does. So kind of reminding our staff that they're there to support. And then also what it looks like to write a grant for the classroom is one of their grant sessions is running right now. And we've had five grants turned in. And I think it's been pretty exciting, too, that we met Andy, Jessica and I this week with them to talk through the grants, make sure that it supports the curriculum we have, look at ways that maybe we can also partner with them financially in some of these purchases that are larger. A lot of those larger ones sometimes are in our CTE program and talking through maintenance expenses and things like that. But it just seems like a nice opportunity and acknowledgement of one of those partners that's helping to get our classrooms ready for our learners and support in different ways. The other update is transportation. We haven't actually talked about that in a meeting. So today, we've skipped a meeting, I should say. First student did let us know that we have one more driver starting on Monday. What that should do is help our PM routes, specifically the middle school, the high school and the Robinwood routes. So remember, we were running short in the afternoon, have been unfortunately all year. So we'll be able to alleviate some of that. We also were able to make some adjustments to do a little earlier pickup in the morning for some of our Robinwood routes to ensure students are getting to school on time and having the proper time to get ready for class. So some good pieces coming in there. We are still short bus drivers. So we are still looking to hopefully gain more drivers. We've heard they have a few in school and in practice. So hopefully those tests are passed and we can come back with more news in that area. We've also had feedback from parents that's been beneficial through this as far as, you know, sharing the wealth as far as when you're impacted by routes, how can we adjust that to sometimes impact others? It's not always the same families. So we've been working to directly communicate with families through that process as we find ways to maybe alleviate or shift. We had also done a second survey with families a little over a month ago when we weren't sure if we were going to continue to get cancellations. Luckily, cancellations have stalled for a while, but we're still working to build back. But we have looked at that data we received also to see, are there, just ridership in general, are there less families using transportation now than what identified would when we gave the survey at the end of last school year? So identifying are there some students actually not riding? And can we fill those seats with students that need a route? So we continue to look at it and get creative, but we are excited that we'll have one new driver next week and hopefully one or two more adding soon. So those are the district updates for this week.
Thank you. That new driver might be me. Not positive.
I didn't have confirmations, I didn't want to say.
I am taking my test tomorrow.
Good luck, Mike.
Now the pressure's really on.
It really is. I've said it in a meeting. Yes, it's recorded.
Reimint the survey.
Yes. Everybody wear your helmets around the city. All right. Thank you. Reports, presentations and other school board business programming update approvals. Mr. Blessington, please.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I am back like I explained two weeks ago. So the items, program updates, each of these were described in detail two weeks ago, but today I'm seeking board approval in three areas, computer science, tech ed and FIAD. So just to ground us a little bit, again, action update in those areas. In each of those areas, we are in terms of our continuous improvement process, our curriculum review process, we are in that stage four. So, you know, I'll be coming back next month to go in a little bit more detail updates on that. But just to give you, you know, I just want to bring this graphic back. As you recall, in computer science, we are really looking at kind of the why behind it, rationale strengthening our computer science learning pathway, our flexible entry points for both semester and year-long introductory course option. And then what's really exciting, expanding our AP offerings available to all students. So these are some exciting changes. In terms of the revised courses, just to remind everyone, we're going to be revising three courses. And you see those on your screen, the intro to computer science, computer programming one and AP computer science A, and then an additional course, AP computer science principles. Visual, just to see, and I know you saw this like kind of flow chart, but weren't really sure if it's a flow chart. Just to put this all together, you know, we put some, just some markers on there to recognize what the previous slide did is in terms of what are our new courses? And then where do our revised, where do our revised courses fit in all of that? So again, one of the things that I'm really pleased about is looking at that AP computer science principles class. It's open to all students. So in terms of expanding our AP offerings, that's something I know that the team really, really excited about that opportunity and looking at like, how can this impact for all students? So moving through tech ed, again, really updating the engineering, architecture and transportation pathways. Some of it is to prove redundancies or be responsive to that, but also respond to student interest. Or perhaps we know some courses that haven't necessarily ran the last few years, so you heard that a couple of weeks ago. So again, a recap, here's our revised courses. These are removed courses. We wanted a little bit more detail last time about why those are removed. Looking at like specifically engineering, architecture, a revised course is that applied electricity class. And then under that transportation heading, engineering systems and small engines, both fit into like the revised. So just to give you again, an overview. And then lastly, moving on to FIAD, that was the addition of our FIAD course, I'm sorry, our officiating course and really around the idea of supporting college career and life readiness skills. This is something that our FIAD team has really presented or has brought forward, has really want to get this forward. So very highly motivated group. You know, we know that it supports a community need in terms of officiating that and it's a strong connection with our, with our pathways that we're offering at the high school. So in summary, just again, again, you'll see all the different courses we offer and then the new course, officiating would be offered as an elective course. Okay? So I am coming today with asking for approval in changes to computer science, tech ed and FIAD. And those changes would take effect next school year. So our course catalog, we're already starting the signup process for next year. So these would like, we would get these changes implemented immediately to get these started for next year.
All right, does anybody have any questions? All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the updates to technical education, computer science and physical education programming as presented.
So moved. Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Thanks for the excellent presentation.
You're welcome. Thanks. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Spring 2023, early college credit and Start College Now request approvals. Mr. Vollo, please.
All right, so as you can see in front of you, this is our annual, and we're putting together, you know, slightly better times every time we do it, but our annual or semi-annual presentation of our early college credit and Start College Now programs. So looking at those descriptions, members of Start College Now is our technical system. So MATC, WCTC, Gateway, early college credit is any four-year university in the state of Wisconsin. So UW schools, the private schools, Mount Mary included, who was here earlier today. Both programs have a lifetime cap per our policy of 18 credits per student that they can take through any of our programs. That also includes our CNA dual enrollment academies, other things they might do at a college or university. And remember, the denial criteria that we use is there a comparable course at the high school? And comparable course means about 80% of the key essential outcomes are similar or the same. So comparable course does not necessarily mean that, you know, our course grants college credit, although many AP classes can, if a kid passes the exam, they become credentialed. Other things I'd add with the denial criteria, we look at that in advance. So before I give these proposals to you, I look at those courses and try to determine comparable comparability. And also I would add that with that, you know, we look at things and, you know, we use this information in terms of what students are taking. We really try to make sure that we're meeting student need within the high school. So I'm not suggesting that there is a thing that can, you know, recreate all these classes because as you'll see in the proposals, there are many different things kids are asking to take. You know, how is this tied to our goals of building our district? You know, think about college career readiness. So one of the indicators of readiness is taking a credential or a college level class. And that's true of any pathway. So if a student takes a course that is technical, university, college level, that's good. And that could be a course in our high school, like CAP Spanish or our REACH Child Development Pathway and everything else in between. So those courses are good for kids. And if they take it off campus at a school, that's also good for kids. So those are all indicators. And remember, most of our students still go on to secondary schooling immediately after high school. And we also know that, you know, about half of our students who start a four-year university will finish within, I think, six years. So when you think about that, we want all of our kids to be ready and have success in whatever they do next. So a two-year, four-year, whatever training it is. So are they ready? How do they know? And there's a lot of support with them at the high school. So the idea of kids taking these college classes really can give them a taste of college life while they're still also with us. So it's really a great opportunity for kids. And also, we want all of our students to see themselves in these courses. So our students' disabilities, our students from other groups, you know, who maybe aren't having the same success or same access, really can succeed in these courses. So whether it's an AP course and are those students taking the test? Are the students seeing themselves in those opportunities? You know, those conversations start with families and students when they enter the high school or before. Do they aspire to get into those places? So really for us, that's part of that, you know, opportunity gap. And where do we have those persistent, you know, lagging indicators that show us that students are not taking advantage of those? And then do we truly know why? So that's part of our work is building as a system, you know, this year to try to get better. So in terms of questions, I know you've been shared all the course proposals and normally I just kind of, you know, have that list in front of me and in front of you. But if you have any questions, I'd take those now. We have for spring 2023, 25 unique students with 27 different sort of applications requesting, I think, 152 different classes. And no, they cannot take that many classes nearly. So, you know, on, you know, at most, we typically get like 20 classes of any one of these programs at any one time. So it's by no means that many, but kids try to request more than they can possibly have. And again, that information I know is on the summary as well as on the links that are shared with the summary as well. So I'll take any questions you have.
Anybody have any questions? I just think it's really interesting that it seems like three years ago or four years ago, it used to be a bunch of math classes or a bunch of, and now it's a, so many different classes. And, you know, I think that's, I don't know that, I don't know if that means anything, but it, it seems, it seems good, the diversity.
Right. For to take organic chemistry, do the kids have to first take AP chemistry and then do organic? Or is it a requirement for?
Typically, the college will have that prereq, and in that case, they do. So the student, when they submit their application, they have to demonstrate the prerequisite. So if a student's taking organic chemistry, you can yes, assume they had that credit for, you know, Chem I or whatever it is, you know, Principles of Chemistry. And in these cases, that's the case. Otherwise, they can request and the college can say no. But that's for sure. So you see the organic chemistry, you see Calc III, you see social psychology. Those are all typically students. They've taken AP Psych, they've taken AP Chem, they want to keep going. And that's where you see some of those unique things where it's like, wow, you're really getting a lot done because you liked something, you want to do more of it. And again, organic chemistry, I mean, no thanks for me. It's tough.
You might not have time to work with your job.
You know, maybe, maybe.
Some of the courses the kids are requesting are amazing, to be honest, you know, they are high advanced courses.
Yes.
It's very nice of the district to supporting because, you know, each grade, now my son being the college, I know how much it costs.
I move that we accept the Start College Now and Early College Credit Program requests as presented.
Second?
And motions have been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all.
2324, school calendar. Ms. Langkewer, please.
Yeah, lots of talk about the future tonight. So you have this evening, the draft of the 2324 district calendar. So in the memo, it kind of mentions a couple of updates that have been made or changes that you might see from our current calendar or previous ones. So I'm happy to take any questions that you might have about it. And then from here, after your approval, we would obviously distribute it as quickly as we could to our staff and families so they can plan ahead.
I'm glad to see us not starting on September 1st for one day.
Yes.
Good.
And it turns out it's a leap year so that we still end on the same day.
Wow. Did not notice that.
I didn't either, but somebody, I was told.
So parents generally like the full day professional development then?
Yes. Yeah, and we do our best to kind of butt it up against time that the students would have already have off or, you know, obviously at the beginning or the end of a week.
Have there been any things that people requested that you weren't able to accommodate?
We haven't had many requests. We've just had some questions about, you know, what different days mean or what they, you know, what our staff does during those days, but nothing specific that we weren't able to work with.
With your 4K scheduling, when it says you won't see things that are specific to 4K, does that mean like their teacher conferences will be at the same time as the building?
Yes.
There won't be like, they start on different days or anything like that or?
The intention is to move them completely into the regular calendar.
I move that we accept the 2324 calendar as presented.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The treasurer's report is available in the board docs library. School board liaison reports, board self-evaluation, personnel and policy 8105, board self-evaluation. Dr. Kahn, myself.
Well, attached are all the three policies. I think we have to go one by one, you know, policies. So the first policy is the policy for self-evaluation. We are changing the wording and then we also eliminated that it's supposed to occur in early March, you know, specific date. Otherwise, there's just, instead of this school board, we are just referring it as a board. So that's a technical change.
So one of the reasons that we, that we changed the wording from occurring in March, I think it's, I think it's better that we do the board evaluation going into the summer when we'll have our retreat so that we can use that to set our goals for the next year. Possibly looking at changing some of the evaluation. Because I don't know that a lot of, I know we've commented before that we're not getting a lot out of the evaluation tool. And like a lot of exercises, there's really no reason to do them unless you're getting something out of them. So hopefully we'll enrich that somehow. But I do think it will be better doing it after the elections and, and going into summer when we can use the evaluation to, to set our goals for the next year.
And it makes sense to have the policy be written in a fairly open-ended way. So if we need to adjust, we can do so without having to amend the policy.
Well, what about when boards change? I mean, there was a reason we did it prior to an election so that we got the feedback of everybody that was on that board before it turned over. That was, that made sense to me. And you can still use the evaluation in board setting, you know, it doesn't go away, it's available.
Well, I think that there is, I mean, there is the possibility that, there is the possibility that, that a board member or a couple of board members wouldn't be there again. But if a board member's not going to be there again, I don't know why they care enough to fill it out, truthfully. I mean, I think it's, I think doing it later is, I think, my opinion is doing it later makes more sense. Perhaps others feel differently.
Well, and we can have that, this is just to amend the policy to be more open-ended. So we could still have, you could still do it later, could do it earlier. But if you have a strong feeling about doing it earlier, there's nothing about the change in the policy that would preclude that.
Although it makes it more clear that we won't, we'll do it every year, we could not do it.
No, it still says that. The board should be responsible for scheduling an annual self-evaluation.
It makes from a technical standpoint and also if you look at the outcomes, you know, I think having in summer after the elections, you know, because the board member who is elected, they are new or not, you know, even reelected, they are there and they know that they have, they'll be serving the whole school year, you know? So almost the whole school year from July to March, whatever it is. So having a goal set in June will at least help, you know, enable to continue that. If you don't have that, then you have it in March. And then if you're not planning to get reelected or if you don't plan to run for election again, then just setting a goal. So I do concur with Mike that maybe having an, even in May after the election, you don't even have to put it till September if you just want to start the goal setting even in May.
But this is about evaluation, not goal setting. This is about evaluating what's happened, not what's, there's nothing about goal setting in here. This is really about looking what happened, not what we're going to do point forward. Did you plan changing it, not having it in March? Is that what you're saying? We're not going to have it in March?
I think this sets us up to not have to have it in March if we.
But we're going to have it annually. So what month did you have in mind if it wasn't going to be March?
Later after the election, going into the summer when we do our, but again, I don't think that, as Angie said, I don't think that, I don't think that changes what the as Andrew said, I don't think that, I don't think that changes what the wording of the policy.
Yeah. And the wording of the policy before said the president's responsible for doing this, and that has always been the case, and that's not going to change. So, I mean, ultimately, the president's responsibility to determine when we're going to do it. It's how the policy's always read.
How do you consider the annual year? Because we have so many years in play, calendar year, school year, election year. There's a lot of years in play. So, what do you mean by once annually?
I think that, I mean, to me, that means once every year.
But when's, is it the board year? Because, you know, you start in April, you get elected in April, so you, that board year, from a board member's standpoint, ends in March, it's because it starts in April, so.
I read this as the traditional definition of annual, which is once a calendar year. I think that that's a reasonable reading of the policy.
It sounds like there's some discussion that maybe needs to occur before we do it to decide how best, you know, you're talking about, we're looking at this, we're looking at this policy to change the policy, but then you've kind of also added in, we're going to work with the evaluation at the same time as setting our goals. So, you're kind of bringing those two things together. I think all the policy does here is that if we take out that it has to happen in early March, it's not saying it can't happen in early March or in April or May or June or any of the months of the year. It's just giving us that flexibility. And as we decide, you know, maybe we have further discussion about, do we want to do an evaluation in conjunction with our goal-setting, or do we want them to be separate? And then, based on that, we can decide when it makes the most sense to have the evaluation. I think all we're doing here tonight is just saying it doesn't have to be in March. Kind of loosening it a little bit, making it just a little bit more flexible that we know we're still going to have it once a year. You know, once in a calendar year is how I would read it. And maybe this year, we try it in April instead of March, and we decide, does it work? Or maybe this year, we try it in June, and, you know, it kind of just makes it a little bit more flexible.
I move that we accept the policy. What if I remember this was?
Eighty-one oh five.
Eighty-one oh five as amended. So moved.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Oh, wait.
Discussion.
I'm sorry. Alan. I had a comment that I got cut off, so I'd like to go into the discussion on it.
Yeah.
I don't think eliminating the word "school" in front of "board" is a good idea. If you go to the statutes as one-twenty-point-one-two and one-twenty-point-one-three, which is on another policy we'll go into, nowhere does it have "board" without the word "school" in front of it, or "district" without "school" in front of it. We are not a library board, we are not a board of directors. So, eliminating the word "school," I don't think brings any clarity to any of our policies, and it should always say "school." Why has this been changed to, why, why, it seems like all the policies have similarly.
So, when you go through the policies, even in the three that we're looking at tonight, sometimes it's referred to as "board," sometimes "school board," and sometimes "board of education," like all three ways. So, whatever we pick, it really doesn't matter, it's whatever we prefer. We would just want the same language across all the policies. So, if we have that discussion now and decide "school board," then from here forward, when we review through our regular cycle our policies, we'll just start updating that language. Having worked with Naola, who does policies in the past, they've recommended "board," and that's why I picked that of the three terms, but it really doesn't matter, it's up to the board to decide.
The statutes all say "school board," and I think we should stay along those lines.
Sure.
I really don't, I really don't care, one way or the other, so I'm fine with that.
I agree with the "school board."
I'm perfectly happy with Alan's, with Alan's choice, so.
It's really a technical change at that point, so you could still approve the policy this evening, and we can go back in and change it to "school." That doesn't have to come back through the board, so we can do that.
Or the "school board."
So then, so then.
So, moving forward, I think we'll always be referred as "school board," not "board of education," not "board," just the "school."
Which is, I think, a mistake.
So, if it's just a technical change, then, then can, can it be changed everywhere?
It could be. It would just be a matter of going through all of them and changing it. I mean, we could, but if it doesn't have that much impact on the board, I would say we just grab them as they come, but we can go either way.
Just grab them as they come.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so I'd like to amend my initial motion to reflect the use of the phrase "school board."
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Thank you, Alan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Personnel and Policy, School Board Structure and Authority. Board Policy eight-one-one-zero.
So, the Policy eight-one-zero talks about the structure that we'll have seven members. Again, it's going to be a school board, not a board. And then, that's the president, vice president clerk, and treasurer, you know? That's the structure. The salary talks about the salary that you get paid by the city, it's March and October, unless anyone wants to change that. So, Alan, do you have any input on the changing of the salary or a day, month?
Oh, no, this one is wonderful.
All right, I move that we accept Policy eighty-one-ten as presented with the amendment of keeping the word "school." So, essentially, the exact same.
Yes. Quick question, why is the title saying copy of school board expression?
Just as we're cleaning it up now, when it goes to publication, we'll take that out.
Okay.
Like, we make a copy of it, put the changes in, but before it's finalized and approved by the board, like, sometimes that copy will still be in there, but it'll be pulled out when it goes to publication after the vote, or tomorrow, I should say.
Oh, I guess they all say that, huh?
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And Personnel Policy, Policy eight-four-one-zero, School Board Policy Development. Dr. Khan, please.
So, this policy was last, it was in two thousand and sixteen. We will continue, required that, it'll here, it'll mention not "board," but the "school board." So, I make an amendment to that, you know, it has to be mentioned "school board," not the "board," everywhere where it is supposed to be, and that we make the policy development based upon the Wisconsin statutes following, you know? That's it.
There is one here that says "board of education," and per prior discussion, we'll change that to "school board."
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yes.
So, everything must align as "school board" going forward.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve as presented with those few changes.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Board Liaison Reports.
So, I do appreciate the form that you've given us and the process we're going to have going forward for reporting our liaison visits. I'm meeting again with Mr. Blessington tomorrow, but the last time we met, he actually presented his logic for the way in which he's going to be presenting suggestions for course changes. In other words, coming to us prior to actually seeking approvals, that if we have questions, it can go smoothly. And then, these things will be happening throughout the year as they come up in the natural flow of work in the ongoing improvement cycle model that he's shown. And so, I'm really excited for us to continue to use that model. I think it's proved itself to work well in this example. And, but if any of you have any feedback regarding that model, I'm sure he'd be happy to receive it or be happy to pass it on. Thanks.
Bob, you can feel free to sit in your chair instead of moving to the middle when you.
Or you can move in the middle.
Or you can move to the middle, whatever you want to do, maybe.
However, you're comfortable.
I had the, my second meeting with Mr. Viola at Franklin High School because I'm the liaison. This time, we discussed about improving the A C T scores and what are the platforms that you're giving to the kids, you know? We, at Franklin High School, after doing the discussion, the good thing about, which we have to be proud of as a district, is that nationally, the A C T scores have dropped to eighteen last year, but the district stayed at twenty-two. So, it didn't drop, which is a good, good thing, you know, because nationally, it's a drop. So, we discussed with, discussed with Mr. Viola how we can improve because, as Mr. Blessington mentioned in his report, eighty to eighty-five percent of the students, you know, are going, of the high school graduates are going to a two-year or four-year college, you know? So, most of the kids are entering the college system, and most of the colleges do require A C T, you know, scores. You know, they at least, you know, assist, you know, they're taken into consideration as such. So, during my discussion, I was kind of trying to find out how we can improve the A C T scores. And there is some information which is available to each and every kid in the district on Zello, on the website, which is A C T, actually, it's completely free. They can track it, they can see the evaluation test, they can prepare it on and all that stuff. So, we discussed about maybe spreading more word to the parents and the kids that, hey, we have this free resource available, please use it. And you can ace the exam, it's as simple as that. You know, actually, Mr. Viola was telling me, giving an example of one of the students last year, and as a junior, he scored, I think, twenty-four. And when he came to know about this free resource, which is there on the website, he aced it and he scored thirty-plus or thirty-two, something like that, just by using the resource. So, the platform is there, the resource is there. Maybe just a gentle reminder to the parents and the students that please use this because that's, scores do matter as such. That's my note for the report.
Thank you. Anybody else, please?
Yes, obviously, a meeting got moved till the next week because the election was this week, it made sense, so.
I met with Sean LaPlante at Countrydale, and we had a get-to-know-each-other kind of a meeting, tour of the school, and then we had a discussion about management effectiveness. Thank you. Anybody else? The School and Community Engagement Reports.
There's a middle school wrestling tournament this Saturday, so, interested, come on out.
This is the annual one that is always at the.
It started like two weeks ago, they had their first meet yesterday against Oak Creek. I'm not sure if they won or lost, but I think it was close, either way.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Keep in mind also on Saturday is the fashion show for the Educational Foundation. Motion, I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen-point-eight-five-one-D to review district safety plan and goals.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded, I think we need a roll call, please.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Khan?
Here.
Dr. Beer?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alex Zandrovich?
Yes.
And Mr. Sapursky?
Yes.
We are in closed session at six forty-seven.
And we did not, we did not take any action in closed session. School Board Meeting Debriefing, anybody have any comments? All right, future agenda items are all there for you to read. There will be, the curriculum review cycle will be next month. I don't know about the discussion of proposed resolutions, I don't know when that happens, I think January.
Yeah, my, December, yeah.
And we'll have the coherence plan and assessment reports.
Yes, coherence plan will be in December, and assessment report.
Who's our W A S D person?
Andrew is the.
Nice case, I think.
The delegate for the thing again?
I think you're the delegate, I think.
All right.
I think.
I can't remember. Did we have a conversation about it? I don't remember. I'm going to the conference, I'll do it if you want me.
No, we didn't have a conversation.
I was just going to say the, with the W A S D, have to happen in December because it's right before the conference? I guess it's. I thought that was signed at the beginning of the year, but beginning of the board.
The truth is.
Okay.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at seven forty-one. Thank you.